Good morning Birmingham. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is May 3rd, 2022. I call the meeting to order at 9:34 a.m. We'll have our invocation today by Reverend Chris Erskine of the Movement Fellowship Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, who will be led by Counselor Carol Clark. If you are all willing and able, please stand.
Pray. Oh Lord, our Lord, how excellent is your name, majestic and marvelous in the earth. Our Creator and Sustainer of life, the one who governs all of our affairs. This is the day that you have made. We rejoice in it and we are glad to be alive and well. Father, we bless and honor your name today. We pause to praise you for all of your goodness and greatness, not only to us but in us. There is never a moment or a minute of our lives that we need your presence, that you have not already assured us that we will have your assistance. Today, our beloved city of Birmingham is faced with calamities and concerns and challenges that our citizens are dependent on our city leadership to guide them through it. We ask that you, oh great God, will provide our leaders with the acumen to address each of these concerns and the attentiveness to apply solutions to each challenge. We pray and plead for your mercy. We pray for your grace that is always sufficient. Overwhelm us with your love that equips us to respect and revere every person as we desire to be treated. As our city leaders and their staff execute business on behalf of Birmingham, we ask that you would provide each of them wisdom, insight, intelligence, to do so effectively and not selfishly. Help us to support what is right in your sight. Reduce and remove all culprits of, all culprits that cause crime to soar in our city. Give us peace and heal our land. Protect our children, our elderly, and those who need you most. Speak to the hearts of Counselor Woods and Hunter and Hunter Williams and Valerie Abbott. Speak to J.T. Moore and Counselor Darryl O'Quinn. Speak to Counselor Crystal Smitherman and Wardine Alexander. Speak to the heart of Counselor Carol Clark and Counselor Latonya Tate. And we forever look to your grace, your mercy, and your kindness as you watch over our mayor, Mayor Woodfin, and his staff. We trust you now for absolutely everything we need. It's in your name we declare these things done. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. The minutes are not ready for January 4th through April 26, 2022. I believe we'll have communications from the mayor that will be brought by Chief-
Roll call.
Roll call. I'm just so ready to get started today. Roll call, Mr. Clerk. Thank you.
Counselor Member Abbott.
Present.
Counselor Member Clark.
Present.
Counselor Member Moore. Counselor Member O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Morning. Counselor Member Tate.
Good morning, President.
Counselor Member Williams.
Good morning.
Morning, sir. Counselor Member Woods.
Present.
Counselor Pro Tim Smitherman.
Good morning.
Morning. Counselor President Alexander.
Ooh, I'll take a deep breath. Good morning. Thank you very much. Now we'll get on with it. Thank you all, councilors and audience. Minutes are not ready for January 4th through April 26, 2022. And I believe communications will be brought to us today by Chiefs Sparks.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Madam President, Madam Pro Tim, members of the council, members of the public. Trying to be succinct. I know we have a pretty full agenda today. So first, today marks 65 days until the World Games comes to our great city, July the 7th through the 17th. We'll be sharing important details for residents and businesses later today regarding events and road closures coming to various neighborhoods. Please stay tuned to birminghamal.gov/BHAMready. Again, more information to come later today via a presser. HBCU Spring Coming. We shared information on this last week. The New York-based HBCU Spring Coming Festival is coming to Birmingham. This annual week-long fest celebrates the HBCU experience through events, scholarships, panels, and service activities, and will do so for the first time ever in the South, May the 27th through 29th of this year. There's going to be an innovation lab, wine and jazz mixer, comedy show, tour of the historic Civil Rights District, and more. The event will take place in concert with the SWAC baseball tournament, which is being held at Regions Field, May 25th through 29th. In addition, $25,000 book scholarships will be given away to Birmingham Promise students attending HBCUs in the fall. For additional information and to register, go to hbcuspringcoming.com. And big shout out, Madam President, members of the council's IEO team, for doing a great job in recruiting this fantastic event. Time to put some young people to work. DYS's Kids &amp; Jobs program is officially kicking off its, this year's campaign. Kids &amp; Jobs partners with public and nonprofit organizations to provide Birmingham youth with an introduction to area, to the area workforce. The annual summer employment program consists of two components. The first one is workforce exposure, which is for young people ages 14 and 15 years old, and we have a few here today. The other offers future executive training for young people between the ages of 16 and 24. We invite all students who live in Birmingham to visit bhameuthfirst.org to learn more and to apply. Applications are open right now, and they're open through May the 20th. Couple more notes, Madam President. This is National Teacher Appreciation Week, so we encourage all students, parents, family members, and community to love on teachers this week and show our gratitude for all that they do to take care of the next generation of our scholars and leaders. And then Mother's Day is this coming Sunday. Mayor Woodfin would like to wish all of our mothers and those who serve in mother figures roles a happy, happy Mother's Day. For the last recognition, Madam President, I'd ask if, at this time, members of the Phillips Academy Middle School baseball team, along with Acting Principal Ms. Reynetta Wiggins, Athletic Director Coach Justin Kelly, Head Coach Jonathan Rice, and a few parents, Darryl and Kristy Huston, Hudson, Greg Nixon, and Michelle Aguilar, please join me at the podium. So, Madam President, my Pro Tim, members of the council, I'm actually pulling double duty today. I am making the presentation, but I'm also a part of it. Standing before you right now are the Birmingham City Schools 2022 Middle School Baseball Champions. The team finished this year with a 10-1-1 record. They won the conference, conference championship after a hard-fought battle with Parker Middle School. And then they ultimately won the city's championship, city middle school championship after defeating LM Smith Middle in another great game. The team had an amazing season, although there were many challenges that existed with baseball across the state this year. For those who followed, there was a significant umpire shortage across the state, and it made it very hard for teams on all levels, elementary, middle, high school, to get their games played. However, due to incredible commitment by many of these Lions Pride baseball parents, and specifically Principal Darryl Hudson of Parker High School, he worked very hard on behalf of the team and all of the schools to secure games, to secure umpires for the games, and the team was able to finish the season strong. So, a few special acknowledgements we want to make. You'll hear from him shortly, our head coach, Coach Jonathan Rice. Also, Mr. Darryl Hudson, again, Principal of Parker High School. Parker hosted all of Phillips's home games. They hosted the conference championship and also the middle school championship. Our amazing bookkeeper team dad, who also moonlighted as another coach, Mr. Greg Nixon, I don't know if there he is back there. And also our lead team moms, we had some great parent support, Ms. Kristy Hudson and Michelle Aguilar, they are over there. Then all of these Lions Pride baseball parents that are seated behind me, who dedicated their time, talent, and treasure, could y'all wave down hands, Lions Pride baseball fans? All right. At this time, we'd like to invite Principal Wiggins to come up and have a few words, as well as our head coach, Jonathan Rice. They'll share a few words, and then following them, each player will introduce themselves, give their name, grade, and position, and then we'll close out.
Hello, everyone.
Good morning.
I am Acting Principal Reynetta Wiggins at Phillips Academy. I just want to say I am so proud of the Phillips Academy baseball team. They have shown great sportsmanship throughout this season, and this what happens, team, when you play and act as a team. Congratulations. Good job, guys.
Come on, I think Coach Sparks could attest, I could draw plays and come up with a game plan in about 20 minutes. This right here, this game plan here, to speak about these 15 young men, took me about four days, nine pages handwriting. But I just want to thank you for the recognition of their accomplishment. Their journey this year, as Coach Sparks could attest, was anything but ideal. We played seven games of a 19-game schedule. Weathers, umpire shortage, as stated, and even teams folded because of the shortage. They folded. We were unable to play a lot of the games. They decided to stick with it and play anyway, when they had to face that emotional task of practicing, working hard, getting ready for games, and then it not come to fruition. But they, they stuck with it. As long as they showed up, I showed up, they didn't quit when they had other options. I think that's just a testament to the foundation still to them by their parents, to see things through, never give up, don't quit. And the group that started this season, everyone finished, no one left. When we started January, not, when we started in January, we only had nine. The nine that were there, I told them we could compete, but there's no way we'll be able to win with that. And then the nine turned into 11, then finally we have this 15. Their baseball experience ranged from zero seasons to nine seasons. They talked the big game, but we had, we really had to work, and really Coach Sparks really stepped in to help bridge that gap in the experience that they had. So, we got everyone to get better throughout the season. Everyone got better. Also, this is probably the only group of teams that I know that, baseball team that has done the most push-ups. We have pushed-ups as a baseball team continuously, even had to do them during games, but no matter what they, no matter what they didn't do, they were always ready. Practice always ended with, "Coach, can I hit some more? Coach, hit me fly balls? Can we get more reps? What can I work on to get better? What do I need to improve more?" And then practice began with the same thing. "Coach, this is what I've been working on at home, this is what I've been doing." So, that's just a testament to their work ethic and how much they wanted to get better and participate and be part of this team and group as a unit. I want to thank Phillips Administration and Athletic Director Justin Kelly for allowing me to coach these young men and trusting me to lead them in the direction. Also, thank you Coach Sparks again for helping out, for being that bridge in that experience gap. Gregory Nixon, Shayla Aguilar, Kristy Huston, thank you for handling all the things off the field, so I really only had to focus on baseball on the field. My wife, who was part of the carpool, and everyone else that was part of the carpool that showed up to transport bags, bags, equipment, to get us there. And again, Principal Darryl Hudson, who stood in the gap to make sure phone calls, make sure we had umpires, make sure we got these games in, just to make this season actually what it was. Appreciate it. And then to all of you guys, I want to thank you for allowing me to be your coach, trusting me, being respectful, and having a lot of fun.
Good morning.
All right, base. First base.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tristan Manning. I'm number 19. I play left field.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Cameron. My name's Ryan Cameron. I'm in eighth grade, and I play left field.
All right.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Faye Turner. I'm in seventh grade, and I play right field. outfield.
All right, Turner.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. My name's Tadarius Carter. I'm in eighth grade, and I play right field.
Thank you.
My name is Fred Plonk. I'm in seventh grade, and I play outfield, third base, and pitcher.
My name is Eddie Gray. I play all outfield, and I play third base.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Taj Johnson. I'm in the seventh grade, and I play outfield.
Good morning. My name is Joakim McKelvey. I'm in the seventh grade, and I play second base and pitcher.
I'm in the second. I'm in eighth grade, and I play third base, pitcher, and catcher.
Morning, everyone. My name is Justice Sparks, and I play second base, shortstop, third base, center field, and catcher.
Good morning. My name's Ryan Rice. I'm in the eighth grade. I play shortstop, catcher, and pitcher.
Oh, my name is Abby McKee. I'm in tenth grade, and I play outfield.
Madam President, members of the council, thank you for your time, but I think it's important that you all know who they are, because they are the red and black wearing, diamond field sharing, base stealing, hitting and fielding, running and sliding, line driving, brothers of fun. And I'm having a hard time holding them Lions fans down. Now, give me two claps and a ring slap. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Well, we are very excited, and we really congratulate the team, the coaches, the team moms, the principal, and all, everyone. So, thank you all. We appreciate you presenting them to us today.
That concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you. All right. At this time, do we have any announcements of boards and agencies? Mr. Clerk.
Yes, ma'am. President, we have the Birmingham Jefferson County Port Authority, we have Sharon Porter. Term expires June 14, 2022. It is a five-year term. And the committee is Transportation and Communications.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll note this opening and look for Dr. O'Quinn and his committee to bring us a candidate or either renew this. Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Clerk, could you read the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Consent agenda starts on page two with items one, two, three, four, and five. Page three, we have item number eight on consent. Page four, we have item nine and 10 on consent. Please note that nine was recommended by Public Safety. Page five, we have item seven and item 13 on consent. Page six, we have items 14 and 16 on consent. Page seven, we have items 17, 18, 19, and 20 on consent. Page eight, we have items 21, 22, 23, and 24 on consent. Page nine, we have items 25, 26, 27, and 28 on consent. Page 10, we have items 29, 30, 31, 32, and 33 on consent. Page 11, we have items 34, 35, 36, and 37 on consent. And on page 28, we conclude the consent agenda with items 39 and 42. We have actually one of them, item, we're going to withdraw item, item 44.
Okay. All right. Thank you. At this time, councilors, do you have any items that you would like to add or remove to consent?
Madam President.
This is Abbott.
I'd like to remove item three from consent.
All right, councilors, there's a request to remove item three from consent on page two. Any other? And item 12, we removed from consent earlier, the request came during public safety, public safety, during pre-council. All right. Any other items, councilors? All right. Thank you very much. At this time, all items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial, and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. All matters of permanent operation, and those indicated with a P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Do I have a motion in the second for the consent agenda?
Remove approval.
Second. Remove it?
I don't think we- Can anybody vote? I see Counselor Abbott, so, okay.
You want to remove them?
Okay, counsel. Counselor Tate, how was that vote? Okay, I got you, counselor.
So, that was Counselor Wood, Williams said it's aye.
Aye, okay. Yeah.
All right. The consent agenda items passed. Those who are here to hear any motions concerning the consent agenda, those items have been approved. We appreciate you joining us today, and we'll continue with the rest of the agenda.
Item three?
And you know what? Before we start item three, Mr. Clerk, I do know that we had a question during pre-council of the number of, what were those? The emergency notifications? And did we just clear up how those are presented to us? I believe we did during pre-council. Was there a question, or did we have our question answered? We had a certain number of them. I thought we cleared that up. Is that true?
I thought the city attorney was going to have somebody come and tell us how it works.
Yes, so at that time, let's go ahead and have that discussion so that we can get those off the agenda. Thank you. Attorney King.
Thank you. I have Attorney Sheffield here. Good morning.
Good morning. Under the general code of the city of Birmingham, Section 3-3-8, upon declaration of an emergency by the purchasing agent, the agent may, with the consent of the mayor or in the mayor's absence, the council president let or extend any contract to meet the emergency without public advertisement, provided that if the contract is for services to be rendered to the city, the contract or extension shall be for a period not to exceed seven days, unless the council by resolution authorizes the agent to extend. So, if we're looking at items 38 and 39, 38 is actually noticing the emergency, 39 is basically saying that that contract can't extend beyond seven days. 41 and 42 are-
All right. Thank you. Does that add the clarification that was requested earlier?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Attorney, and thank you Attorney King and Sheffield. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, is there some questions? Those were the emergency repair notices, items 40, 41, and there was a prior one on a previous page. And a question had just come up. We seem to have a lot of those coming up, and just wanted to clarify how those are presented to the council and how we consider those. Okay? Thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Clerk, we'll go on with the rest of the agenda. Thank you.
Item three, a resolution relative to the application of Class C Company LLC for a restaurant retail liquor license to be used at Social, 103420, St. South, Birmingham, and hearing of all district parties. Motion, please. Item two before you.
All right. Thank you. At this time, we'll turn, this is a public hearing regarding this resolution relative to the application of a retail liquor license. So, this was recommended by the Public Safety Committee. At this time, I'll turn our public safety, our public hearing over to Counselor Tate, Chair of Public Safety. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, we would call the applicant of Class C Company. Could you come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record, please?
Morning. Jeremy Williams.
Put the mic down.
Jeremy Williams.
Okay. And your address, please.
103420, St. South.
Okay. Could you tell us what type of business a classic company that you're applying for restaurant retail liquor license for, please?
Restaurant retail liquor license?
Yes. Could you tell the counselor what type of business this would be?
A restaurant, we'll be serving high-end lamb chops, steak. I actually have the menu I can read out. Our entrees will be creamy, lobster pasta, ultimate ribeye. We have different, different fish of the day. We have roasted half chickens, lamb chops. We built out a kitchen, stated out kitchen downstairs. We added a hood system. Kitchen, that would be Brussels sprouts, Brussels sprouts, baked potatoes, double shell lobster mech, asparagus, sweet potato, yellow rice. We have desserts, we have soup of the days. Appetizers would be fire cheese, spinach dips, add shrimp and chicken with that, lobster rolls. Basically, Perry's upscale experience.
Okay. So, this is not going to be a club, correct?
No, ma'am. Not at all.
So, a restaurant, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, I'm sorry? And so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll turn Dan Crane, right here.
Okay. And so, no club, no nightclub, it's going to be a restaurant. And so, I know it's been some, you know, some concerns about your other business, you know, that's downtown and some service calls. What are you going to do different at this location?
I put, in my lease, I have set up my landlord specific-
Speak up.
In my lease, I have set up my landlord specific instructions as far as safety goes to keep, because I know there's some concerns with the space in the past.
I'm A. My name is Dan Crane. I'm the attorney for Social. And the-
And the safety concerns have been addressed. They have came to light what the concerns were for the city and the neighborhood. Okay, so, security. In the lease, there's built-in safeguards for security. If the establishment gets over a certain number, then security would have to be deemed necessary and proper for the establishment at that time. There's, to allocate for trash, there will be a number, a certain number of trash, because it's a restaurant now. So, the lease calls for valet, trash. And so, there's another part that was put in for safety. And also, valet services was put in to allocate the traffic and to keep the patrons moving as they enter and exit the space.
Okay. Okay, because, you know, as a counselor, I believe, you know, truly believe in, you know, giving people, you know, opportunity to, you know, establish theyself, because you do have some other businesses as well, some other, you know, type of restaurants that you operate. And could you tell the counselor, you know, what are those businesses?
Eight wings, I have six locations throughout the city.
Six locations throughout the city. Okay. Is Mr. Wesley Cornell, Mr. Wesley, can you come and give the council, like, some, what type of economic impact that this will have on, you know, for the city?
In terms of economic impact, we haven't seen the performant. What I can state is philosophically, or rather foundationally, our city has been engaged in and paying close attention to existing businesses and the expansion of such. This expansion, as he's mentioned, is six locations already, and is a proven restaurateur. So I think it's incumbent upon us to continue to support efforts in general around all of the expansion efforts of our business entrepreneurs here in Birmingham. Secondly, this is an entertainment district. And so, being able to have quality amenities within the district is paramount to continue to drive traffic to said district. So we, as a department, and in my professional opinion, this is a good fit for our city.
Thank you. Okay. Is anyone here from the... Go ahead.
Can I, I'm confused about what just happened. Is the mayor, is the mayor and the mayor's office team verbalizing support for this liquor license?
That was not...
Through economic impact?
No, that was not the, from my understanding, I think the council was inquiring from a, from an economic development standpoint, what is IO's position. So obviously, it's the council's pleasure. Certainly, the residents will share their thoughts, but from an economic development standpoint, that's what Mr. Wesley was intending to state.
Thank you.
I'm just a little surprised in my five years on this council, and since Mayor Woodson's been in office, not one time has, has the administration commented on a public safety issue, and then taken in effect what the potential tax revenue is for a public safety issue. I'm just, I'm kind of floored, honestly, but anyway...
Counselor, I understand your concern and what you're asking here. I think it's very clear, though, Councilor Tate, as the chair, did ask for that offering and that information regarding the economic development. Perhaps it could've come at a later time in the public hearing, but that was not, I don't take it, and I want to be sure councilors don't take it, as that was any affirmation from the mayor or any of his team as far as whether our consideration for this item. So I appreciate what you're saying, but at this time, I do want to be sure we're clear that that was not an affirmation or anything from the mayor or administration. That was just to reiterate the economic impact that this particular restaurant may bring to the city.
That is correct, Madam President.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's off the top.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, because that was the intent, Councilor Williams.
Thank you, and...
Thank you very much.
Ms. Tate, I believe at this time, you were ready to call for public...
Is anybody here from the public that would like to speak for this, against this item?
And as they come forward, Ms. Tate, do they have three minutes?
Yes, three minutes, state your name, your address for the record, please.
It makes a funny noise when you go like that. Good morning, Madam President, honorable members of the...
Speak up just a little bit. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I am Sheila Chaffin, 2028 Highland Avenue South, zip code 35205. I'm the president of Five Points South Neighborhood Association, also member of the Board of Directors of the Alliance. The president of Alliance intended, as soon as he heard last night at 10 o'clock, which is when I first heard this was happening, he's in court. He's an attorney, could not stop the court appearance. So please receive my remarks, trying to carry out what he and I talked about, so it's a two-for-one, if you will. The neighborhood heard this matter twice. It has been denied twice. There was the Public Safety Committee, and we testified as well, and it was denied there, is our impression of the events. And the reasoning is this. The applicant called to be on the agenda, which is normal. We put him on the agenda of the neighborhood. That was September 21st, 6:00 p.m. He did not come despite arrangements that he would. He sent a representative, her name was Molly Brown. She had a menu, sort of like what you just heard. Sounded good for the food. The issue was not the food. It was sell the liquor license, what might occur. Captain Harry Greenberg was present, decided, cited the many instances of disturbances, police calls that had occurred at the other location, and that was discussed in some length. There have been two other clubs in and around that particular area where members of the Neighborhood Association vividly remember the kind of disturbances that did occur, and ultimately, it caused the revocation of the liquor license of an operation called Banana Joe's. Then it also caused the revocation of liquor license of the operation called Sky, like S-K-Y, Sky, and, you know, upstairs. So there was a great discussion of that. The representative that was sent by the applicant was unable to discuss any of all of that. There was no request by applicant representative for continuance, and based upon that information, there was a denial motion which passed unanimously amongst those present. Then there was, it then came up to the Public Safety, the same set of folks testified there, and we explained all of that in our testimony, part of the record. It was then, to our impression, denied 3-0, and then we thought the next step would then be city council. But applicant called me a couple times, I'm referring to Mr. Jeremy Williams when I say applicant. He wanted to come to the Christmas party. I said, "Fine." There were a few items, but it wasn't a time to get into this matter, so it was arranged that he would then come on January 18th to the neighborhood. He did not come. We went through the same testimony of the remembrances of everyone, and it was again denied. Then, at the last hearing of the neighborhood, which would have been April, I'm thinking 18th or 19th, just the last cycle, 3:00 or so in the afternoon, he called and wanted to know if I would put on his item again to be reconsidered then for one, two, this would be the third time. I explained that we always notice what's in a hearing. He had not been noticed. It was appropriate for him to be moving forward into city council or not, but he'd gone through all the steps, and it should not come up again at the neighborhood. So I just wanted to give that personal testimony, what has occurred here. We have other speakers to follow. We have Vice President of the Neighborhood now, Mr. Apalda.
Ms. Chaffin?
Ma'am, we can't hear you.
Ms. Chaffin, your three minutes has expired, so I want to give, you know, the other people the opportunity to speak as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And could you state your name for the record, and please speak into the mic, because we are having a hard time, you know, hearing your response.
Thank you very much, and good morning to all the council members. My name is Gary Bostany. I live at 1703 Richard Arrington Jr. Boulevard. I am retired past president of the Five Points South Neighborhood Association, and I currently serve as a board member on the Five Points Alliance, which is the merchants association and the neighborhood combined into a nonprofit. I'm here to speak on behalf of the request for the restaurant retail liquor license with Social, and I'm here to, really to get information as well. The Neighborhood Association did vote this down twice. There had been major red flags to come before the neighborhood regarding this issue. As a matter of fact, I've been involved ever since, and why they came twice, I don't understand. The first time, it was a retail, I'm sorry, it was a restaurant retail liquor license, and we did not approve it because of the history of the applicant's other business, especially the nightclub downtown. So we went before the safety committee, and they supposedly voted it down, and it was gonna go before the council. The next thing I knew, it was back before the neighborhood, not as a restaurant retail liquor license, but as a lounge retail liquor license. And we voted that down as well. And we never were informed about the Public Safety Committee meeting that it was gonna be presented. So we've turned it down twice. I want to remind all of you that the space that this applicant is leasing was never built or set up to be a restaurant, okay? It's where the old Sky Lounge used to be. I don't have to remind you of the problems we had there. There is no kitchen in this place. I understand they built a small kitchen in the bottom to go upstairs, because there is nothing, no seating downstairs. This building has been jinxed ever since it was built, from the original Studio Arts Building that burnt to the ground, okay? I also want to remind all of you that I know a lot of people can open up businesses and not have it in their name because of prior issues, and I think this is the case. If we allow this to go and be approved, you really have to know the restaurant business in Five Points, and if you don't, you're not gonna make it. And my feeling is that they're not gonna make it as a restaurant, and they're gonna turn it into a lounge. Okay? We had the same issue 12 years ago when I was president, when Banana Joe's came to Five Points, it was gonna be, you know, the greatest thing, it was a franchise. The neighborhood turned it down. I don't want to go into all of it, but this council approved it, and I don't have to tell you what happened 12 years ago when two teenagers were killed there. We have had so many problems with nightclubs and bars in Five Points, and we've just had $150 million worth of residential construction built in the heart of Five Points, over 15, over 1,000 apartments. We've got now 1,200 new people living there. This is more of a residential area now, and that's what the Alliance is trying to do. So I ask you not to approve this liquor license until we get more facts and more research about the applicant and exactly what's gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Jones, Vice President of the Five Points Neighborhood, 120th Street South. Nothing about this application has been... Excuse me, sorry. Nothing about this application has been professional from the beginning. This started in August of last year. Representatives for Mr. Williams claimed that he was unaffiliated with this business, and that it was his wife's. So we've been misled from the beginning. Prior to last month's neighborhood meeting, he called me asking to be on the neighborhood agenda from a phone number that displayed as Adrian Moore in Catskill, New York. Not sure why you can't call from your own phone. In addition to everything that has been stated by Gary and Sheila, the entire process has been convoluted and unprofessional, in my opinion.
Good morning. Paul Godby, 821, 23rd Street South. I've been looking at this issue since it started, and I'll have to go along with the unprofessional behavior of the applicant. The issue about having a restaurant on the ground floor is questionable because of the amount of infrastructure change you'd have to put in. It's a huge construction cost when directly across the street, at the empty Fo Fo Noodles and the empty Brinkens Pub, it was a turnkey operation. In fact, a restaurant serving crabs has moved into the Brinkens Pub location, and that's how attractive it was. So the cost of this is too high for the restaurant. In addition to that, the initial applicant posted he was going to open a, or somehow the information came out, he was gonna open a club upstairs in the former Sky Lounge, which he had previously owned. This is a list of the addresses of the building with Birmingham Pathicary here, Bill Italy here, and the former Charlemagne Records here. The addresses of the actual building here are kind of questionable. In my research since that time, I found out that... The addresses of the building, if you want me to pass this. The addresses of the building have actually changed over the years, and where the upstairs part listed at 1928 11th Avenue South was Sky Lounge, now it's trying to be touted as 1034, when in actuality, the 1034 doesn't exist. This is questionable as far as the Alabama ABC Board go, because they require a verifiable address. So there's no address that we can identify, and they've also had changed over a number of years. Not listed on this is the fact that the building has changed ownership. Every time it's changed ownership, a new club goes in, and then there's a new address. This means that if he's filed for a police report at an address, oh, that was next door. It didn't happen here, and things. So this is a way to circumvent a lot of legal problems by not having a verifiable address. This is all highly questionable as to Mr. Williams motives and things, and the operation of his business, I think he has what's known as a safe room on Second North in the basement of the Watts Building. We had Captain Greenberg mention there's numerous, numerous calls for service there and a whole bunch of trouble and things. This was not very good news, because at least last year, we had some wild drunken melee there, there's shots fired, and Filter Coffee Parlor had two of their windows busted out. And aside from saying it's plate grass, plate glass, the windows were original to the building from the 1920s, so that was a historical loss. We don't need to be having another wild crazy nightclub down there. We agree with the fact that somebody wants to have a restaurant, and something's nice, but this is too questionable, because the restaurant could fail, oh, I'm gonna open up the club. Well, that's what we don't want.
Thank you.
My name's Preston Hooton. I'm a co-owner of Dave's Pub on South Side, also Buzz Delivery, my business partner owns local shores, near to me dispensary, where, all that to just say, we're definitely invested in Birmingham. All right, and if you are familiar with the climate of Five Points area right now, I guess the best word I could use would be vulnerable, all right? And it's not gonna take a lot to put it in a unsavory spot. So I don't know about all the research that they've done, I just kind of, on a lot of these things, have to listen to people that I trust and go with my gut. But in this situation, from everything that's been presented today, this is just something we don't feel like right now is a good fit for the Five Points area, because we're, you know, we're seeing a, an increase in places that can kind of create negative situations for the town and create a, a place where people just don't want to take a risk to get out, and it's scary to be a part of that right now. So I guess just adding to it is something that is...
Thank you.
Okay. Does any councilors have any questions?
Yes. I just had a comment, and that is that the neighborhood people who attended the Public Safety Committee meeting definitely left with the impression that the committee had voted... voted to deny this or not recommend approval to the full council. But obviously, our council agenda says that it's recommended by the committee. I'm still trying to wrap my head around how three or four people from the neighborhood could leave thinking that it had been denied when it actually was sent back to itself for a safety plan. Isn't that, I think that's, so you know, this bothers me because I've attended all of the Neighborhood Association meetings. I've seen the non-appearance of the applicant. I've listened to the people that did come to speak on his behalf who didn't apparently know much about the business. I don't have a warm fuzzy feeling about this at all. And of course, after the Sky Bar was in that location and all the crime and licentiousness that went on there before we shut the place down by pulling the license, I don't want to see any more bodies on the street or people being pulled out of clubs in a prone position. It really frightens me because Five Points South has always been an entertainment district, but if the public is afraid to go there, it concerns me a great deal. And the fact that this safe room, which has never been mentioned by the applicant, the safe room supposedly, according to the captain, the former captain of the Five Points South precinct, he said that they had like 30 something calls in the first half of the year. That's a lot of calls in six months, calls for service. So, I just, I have, I have an immense amount of concern over this because of what's been going on in Five Points South in recent times. There is a tipping point everywhere. And I think that's it for my comments.
Any other comments? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few questions. On your application, it says that you're going to have a total of 10 tables at the venue and so that for, and this is in the footprint. I'm confused by some of these other, like all this address stuff is confusing me, but I'm just thinking about in Sky, right? Where Sky was, excuse me, you're going to have a total of 10 tables?
No, there will be around 30 to 40 tables. Just to address a couple of things, that there is a kitchen that was built out in
Okay. I guess I need a little clarification because the application sent to the city said that there will be a total of 10 tables in the entire square footage with 52 chairs. So, that's not, the application's incorrect?
Or the 52 chairs.
I'm going off the application that was submitted to the city of Birmingham.
There would be more than 10 tables and there will be
There'll be more than 10 tables but 52 chairs. Okay. How many tables?
Between 30 to 40 tables. You'll be able to add and subtract based on the size of
There'll be 30 to 40 tables and 52 chairs. So, many tables will have one chair.
Assuming, you overaccumulate for chairs. Assuming that you will need these chairs, assuming that you will need these tables, you may not need all the tables at all the time.
There's a reason I'm asking this and
Yeah, I was going to ask you councillor, is it a reason of safety or the fact that the form isn't?
Absolutely. Because if there is an enormous space and there's only 10 tables and 52 chairs and there's an enormous space, it begs the question is, is this going to be a true restaurant? And that's why this is on the city's application.
And I think that the table part needs to be probably amended, but there are more than, I will tell you again, there's more than 10 tables there. There will be between 30 to 40 tables. It depends on what's happening. It's a restaurant. Let's make no mistake about that. That's applying for a restaurant liquor license that sells, just so happens to sell liquor, okay? Now, there will be certain events that will be held here. For instance, a wedding that people may book the space out for. So, that may call for a different setting, different tables and different chairs. And so, they want to be able to allocate for that type of event. So, you do, they do overaccumulate for the chairs.
Okay. So, to clarify even further, this is not going to be just a restaurant. It's going to be an event space as well?
It's a restaurant with liquor license that can have a wedding party. As any restaurant.
And there will be no, no dancing of customers, correct?
Again, this will be a restaurant that so happens to sell liquor, just as Jimmy Nick's down, right next to it downstairs, just as Surin West and then Hive is, I think a block away, just as Hive, sell food, just so happens to sell liquor.
Okay. So, there's a reason I'm asking this is because you just said that there's going to be events, but it's not, there is no Division One dance permit requested for this. So, I'm assuming these will be wedding receptions without any music or dancing?
Again, no. There will be dinner music. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a club. It's not a lounge. It's a restaurant. You go in any restaurant, there is some drowning music. There will be some drowning music. As any restaurant, sometimes wedding parts will come and celebrate and they may be in a table such as this size that you have to put tables together to accommodate.
Okay, but there will be no dancing?
Again, there will be no dancing. It is a restaurant liquor license that predominantly sells food and just so happens to sell liquor.
Okay. So, not, not again, that was just clarified for the first time. So, it's not again. It was clarified for the first time. So, I just want to be very sure before I vote that this is a true restaurant and that's the reason for my questions and that's why these questions are on the application. But anyway, that's my questions.
Thank you. Councillor Tate, I think you have some questions now.
Okay.
Madam Chair, so similar to, you know, we're in the graduation season now. If people wanted to be able to have like a graduation celebration and, you know, bring their families to come and eat, like this would kind of be like the place that they would be able to do something.
Correct.
To that extent.
Absolutely.
So, no dancing or anything, but just eating.
No dancing.
Got it.
Yes, absolutely.
So, the applicant Classico LLC, when I just Googled it, I got Registered Agent Floyd Gaines. Is he associated?
He's the registered agent.
The incorporator of this entity?
Yes.
He worked for you. So, the operator, I'm just curious, are you the operator of like the J-Wings at the Crossplex?
Yes, this is the J-Wings with, so the primary business of J-Wings is a restaurant.
Yeah, it's a restaurant with a bar and, you know, I really appreciated the $5 shots of Patron when you first opened, but they've gone up now. The, the, the safe room, is that the club that's being referenced?
Yes, it is. And if I may add, I've heard a couple of comments about the safe room, about the calls.
About the cost?
Calls, calls, police calls.
Calls, police calls.
You have to look at where it's situated. It has, I believe, four clubs there in that area, lounges in that area. And so, if you hear noise and it comes from the building, the police have to come to that building. The question is what derived out of that call? And there's nothing that has ever derived out of any call that has been placed at the safe room. You know, you may hear noise, but it may not come from safe room. It may come from the club down the street or the lounge. You may have people walking by to, from parking to go to another lounge and they hear that noise and they hear that, they hear that noise and they attribute it to the safe room. Safe room is a basement. It's underground.
Yeah, I've been there.
You can play the music as loud as you want and you will not hear one single word. And so, I
I don't look like I hang out, but I've been there. I am familiar with safe room and it was pretty calm when I was there. But, but I just wanted to establish that you're the operator who has the restaurant in the posits, food hall.
Yes.
And you have one in my district that you operate pretty well. I mean, it's, sometimes I wish the floor was cleaner, but you know, people are in and out of there with, you know, drinks that spill and, but you know, just tighten up on the floor a little bit. But I, you know, it's been a blessing to us to have, you know, some more food services and, you know, an opportunity to, well, we're kind of plagued with fast food and not casual dining experiences on the west side. So, it's been pretty, I mean, it's been a nice addition to have a place to get food and a cocktail if that's what you, you know, desire. So, you know, I want to thank you for making that available to us in Five Points West area.
Thank you. I have 13 years of experience.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Clark. Any other councilors?
So, thank you for drawing the connection between the safe room and this location. I have been contacted by multiple central city residents related to the safe room expressing concerns and most of them do not have anything to do with noise. That being said, I have a question to the city attorney that what's relevant in this case? So, we're presenting, being presented with a set of information related to and being, you know, just being described as a restaurant, not as a club or a lounge. Is it appropriate for us to take into account other businesses that the applicant may be affiliated with? Is that even relevant in this case?
So, the applicant has mentioned other businesses in close proximity that operate similarly to his establishment, Surin West. He mentioned Jimmy Nick's. So, those are what you take into consideration for this location. And there's, by law, under 2816, as you all know under the Alabama State Code, whenever you all are considering granting or approving or denying a liquor license, there's seven factors that you have to consider, such as does it create a nuisance? Is it close to a residential area? Does it pose a risk? Is it close to a school? Those are, there are seven factors that we normally go through that you have to consider. So, those are what's before you.
Okay. And then, this may be a question for the mayor's office, but you know, we have businesses that come for, to us to ask for, you know, licensing or change in zoning or various things of that nature. And then, in some instances, you know, what they said they were going to do and what actually happens may not be the same thing. So, what is our enforcement mechanism? You know, I've heard mention of Office of Business Compliance. I'm not familiar with, you know, what department that's actually situated in, who is responsible for that office. So, can you tell us a little bit more about that, someone?
So, yes, our councillor, it's a combination of the Birmingham Police Department and our code enforcement teams. So, the recourse would be if a business were non-compliant, provide that notice to the administration and we would send units from both of those departments out to confirm.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Any other councilors?
Thank you. Do want to appreciate you for coming down and opening this business. One, I think that, you know, it really comes down to, I think, some of the concern around whether or not it's a restaurant. I think that everything you've said, you know, indicates you're going to have a restaurant. The investment that was made to add a kitchen further speaks to it being a restaurant. I don't necessarily want to get into, you know, I think there was a lot of loosely things thrown around about what might be or, you know, nothing tangible that even happened at another business or anything like that. And so, I'm uncomfortable with some of those type of conversations and some of the things that were said, but you know, I think we're in a position basically to speak to, you know, what's being presented to us. You know, everything aligns with that, you know, putting in the kitchen, installing the kitchen and going from that point of view. I don't know that we can hold this business owner accountable for something that previous business owners have done. I don't think the building is jinxed or anything like that. And so, I just think treading lightly about some of the things that we throw around as far as when we're talking about whether they, I'll stop short of like accusations or anything like that, but yeah, I think just kind of staying locked in on specifically what we're considering is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Woods. And also, I want to add as well to what Councillor Woods, you know, has stated. I, you know, I did have an opportunity to go out and look at this location and can attest that it is going to be a true restaurant. I saw the kitchen, the area that was blown out for a full kitchen. Also, as Councillor Woods say, we cannot hold someone accountable for some things that transpired in the past. We all know that gun violence is up across the country, no matter where we go, where we tread. I think everybody's on edge every day wondering, am I going to be this person on today? And so, I'm like Councillor Woods, I think we got to really, really be careful when we, you know, try to associate individuals or try to use language that try, you know, that tear, you know, to tear people down. Let me make something else real clear. When this item was brought to me three weeks as a chair of public safety, we did, you know, hear some issues and so, we did not deny this item in public safety. We returned it back to public safety. And so, we had an opportunity to clear up some things as well. And then, I know that Mr. Williams had had cardiac surgery and so, he was unable to attend some neighborhood meetings. And so, you know, I'm a councillor that truly believes in, you know, giving people second chances. And so, as Attorney Crane has stated, when we look at the dynamics of where the safe room is located, who are we to say that these calls are coming, you know, from the safe room? People are, you know, out and the city is just moving in a progressive way. And so, I believe, you know, what I saw, what I saw is to be a restaurant. And so, I want to, you know, just say we appreciate, you know, what you're doing. I've frequent J-Wings as well. And so, thank you. And so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you did go out and it is for sure being a restaurant. Okay. And then, but to refresh my memory, this first came through us as a nightclub, right? It was not, it didn't have an application for a lounge, one retail liquor license because my, my recollection is this first went through the, went through this committee as a nightclub.
Okay. Thank you for that question.
And then, so the reason, so the reason we unanimously voted it down last time was, remind me why that was done?
So, the item that's before us now, it is coming to us as a restaurant and this is the application at this time. Correct? But wait a minute, I want to be sure that from administration, this is what is before us now. This is correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, this is the item that we are considering at this time. I want to be sure this is clear so that when we go in a few minutes and we vote for this item, that we have the clarity on what we're voting for. And I believe, I'll turn it back over to your chair, but I believe, Ms. Clark?
Now, you got me wondering if my comment is relevant, but I did want to Now you got me wondering if my comment is relevant, but I did want to thank the Five Points West Business Alliance and their stewardship of this very special place in Birmingham because one of the things that I like the best about Five Points South is how it's many things to many people, different times of the day. And it has a very unique diversity and it's, you know, beautiful and historic. And I know that some of the people who spoke today are a big part of making it special and keeping it special. So I hope, you know, if this operator is successful at this location, that he'll be a part of the alliance and, you know, join that very special family we have in Five Points South. That's my comment.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Madam Chair, anyone else?
Thank you. At this time, we're ending the public hearing. And any questions among councilors? Councilors, if we're ready for the vote, we'll go ahead and entertain the vote. Thank you for chairing this, Councilor Tate.
You're welcome, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Hey, hold on. I just got clarification that it was presented as a nightclub previously, which I'd like to change my vote to no because this was predicated on the information that was given.
I thought it showed you no already. What is the final vote then?
Oh, yes, she had declared, so that's fine. Everyone voted, yes, to set Councilor Abbott and Williams.
Right. Thank you. So the vote is seven two. Thank you. That item passes. Thank you very much. Next item.
Uh, we should be going to the seat. It's like item six.
Excuse me, can we go? I've got some background noise back here.
Item six.
Thank you.
Item six. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim, uh, execute quick claim deeds pursuant to the unification agreement dated April the 15th, 1998 between the city and Jefferson County, Alabama, under which the city will convey to Jefferson County. The city is interested in certain parcels of property located at 20 South Park Road, 5339 Eighth Avenue West, 3443 35th Street North, 2609 Popular Drive, 1139 Brock Industrial Drive, 330 Bibb Street, 1501 33rd Street Southwest and 808 11th Street, Inslee, Birmingham, on which sanitary sewer pump stations are located in order to carry out the provisions of the unification agreement and enable Jefferson County to perform upgrades to the pump stations. And this is item permanent operation. You see to pass it today. Then I need a regular vote.
Motion for UC.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Second.
Oh, okay, motion on the item. Uh, Councilor Protim Smithman in, the second was.
Thought it was Clark.
Oh, who made the motion? Okay. All right. And then Clark, second.
I'm sorry. Smithman's motion and Clark's second.
All right. Items before you.
All right, councilors, any questions regarding this ordinance that would authorize us for the quick claim deeds so that we can have these sanitary sewer pump stations operating? Any questions? All right, at this time, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Tate. Thank you, ma'am. That vote should be up.
All right, thank you. Item six passes. Next item.
Item seven, an ordinance authorizing the chief of police to execute a 2022 cooperative agreement and cost reimbursement agreement for a period not to exceed three years between the Federal Bureau of Investigation and the City of Birmingham for its police department for the participation of up to three Birmingham police officers and the FBI's North Alabama Safe Street Task Force for reimbursement to the City of Birmingham for overtime payments. May BPD officers assigned to work full time on NASSTF-related matters forfeitures attributable to NASSTF investigations may be equitable share. Agencies participating in NASSTF also the chief of police is authorized to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the purpose of the agreement. Same situation, item permanent operation, you see to pass today.
Motion for UC.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Second.
All right, most on the item, Councilor Smithman. Second, it's mine. All right.
We do have a question, but did we get the first?
I need a second.
More.
Okay, thank you. It's before you.
All right, thank you. We have a question from Councilor Quinn.
Yeah, a really simple question. It's just a renewal of a previous.
Attorney Tracy Roberts, come and speak to the item.
Good morning. Detective Burke, Department of Defense, Department of Crime Reduction Team. And at this time, I am currently a task force officer working with the, um, the last year of the South Florida campaign.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions, councilors? We're ready for the vote. We'll call for the vote. Item seven passes. Next item.
All right, let's go twelve. And, good read with little corrections here, resolution pursuant to section 11 dash 40 dash one and 11 dash 47 dash 16 codes of Alabama 1975, authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with the Jones Valley Urban Farm doing business as Jones Valley Teaching Farm in amount not to exceed $5,000 period. Start a new sentence, the provider will manage and offer public access to the facilities in order to provide urban farming educational opportunities for the poor and needy citizens of Birmingham and will also advertise and have media releases of the services provided in urban farming for a term of three months from the date of this agreement. And I am not aware of the funding source. Councilor Abbott.
Are we going to send it to?
We're going to move.
I need to get it here.
Second.
All right, now we can do whatever we want.
All right, counselor.
Um, we're going to move to delay this one week until the next council agenda and then put on the next budget and finance.
Second.
For the public safety.
Budget and finance.
Oh, budget and finance, I'm sorry.
They will go on next week's council agenda.
While we're voting, we're just sending it there or are you going to bring it back? You guys are going to bring it back or are we just going to do?
One week delay for council.
Okay, so it'll come back.
Yeah, the next budget and finance meeting is Monday.
Okay, we'll do just one week delay then.
Yes.
Abbott. All right, that vote should be up.
All right, thank you. Item 12 has a one week delay and it will come back to us and it's also slated for budget and finance on Monday. Next item.
Fifteen.
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the mayor itself to change order number two submitted by Brass Building Gourd LLC for the BX Birmingham Express Bus Rapid Transit East Segment Striping Project, which increases the contract amount by $908,2183 for an adjusted contract pricing amount not to exceed $29,471, no, sorry, $29,407,1356 and increases the contract time by 39 days. My folks, please.
Motion.
Second. All right, councilors, there was a question regarding this in pre-council meeting. This is a change order that has been presented as part of the Bus Rapid Transit for the striping and so they had to go back in and request this change. There were some questions this morning. This did not come through budget and finance, but there was a clarification that we've already approved the item as far as action that we had in August to start this project. And so, Madam, Ms. Abbott, I think you had the question. Go ahead. Thank you.
Yep. My question is, this is an increase of almost a million dollars and I just wanted an explanation for why this change is being made. Did we forget to include striping originally in the project or what?
Okay. Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Abbott, I'll give the short version and then Mr. Denise Bell can come in and get the long version, but the long, the short version is that the funding is to finish the striping on the eastern section of the BRT along with some sidewalk repairs that are conducive with having the BRT system and platforms. But I'll bring Mr. Denise Bell to have a longer conversation if it's needed.
Good morning, Ms. Bell.
Good morning. Denise Bell serves as the Director of Capital Projects. So my understanding is, is why, did we leave this out? Your question is, did we leave this out of the project?
Yeah, why, why the million, extra nearly a million dollars and the extended time of 39 days, which is pretty frightening with the World Games coming? You know, people are asking me, is this thing going to be finished by the World Games? And I say, we plan to. So, just what happened?
Okay, so basically, if you recall, there was some desculping that happened several months ago. Ms. Charlotte presented it to you all, that there was desculping that had to happen in order to bring this project under budget. At that time, you agreed to put in 18 million in this project. However, the contract with Brass Building Gourd had already taken place. So the east segment was not included in that contract at the time. So what we did was waited till we got to a good place in the project to understand whether or not we can add it back to the project. We're at a good place now and need uniformity and have enough funds to add this back to the project and we within the law, bid law, to add this back to the project. So you had a change order one several months ago that added west segment and UAB Medical District, which is two segment out of three segment. That did not include east. So all we're doing is bringing east to the table now. So east will now look like UAB Medical District and the west segment. This also includes thermoplastic striping, which is way more expensive and longer lasting than your typical striping we see across the city. And it will include crosswalks as well and signage. So that's the reason why we're here today.
That is an excellent outline of why we're here and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It was worth you coming up to talk to us or coming down. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? We're ready for the vote. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bell.
That vote should be up.
Just doesn't cut it.
All right, thank you, councilors. Item number 15 passes. Any other items, Mr. Clerk?
Item 38, receiving emergency repair notice from the Director of Capital Projects relative to the sink hole in front of the consolatory pipe distribution facility located 1121 Brock Industrial Drive. And then item 40, receiving the emergency repair notice from the Director of Equipment Management relative to the two fresh compactors. And finally, item 41, receiving the emergency repair notice from the Director of Plant Engineering and Permits relative to the storm sewer failure at 2905 Carlisle Road.
Thank you. And our next item.
And the final item is item 43, which is, item, and let me find it here. A resolution granting operating authority, granting an operating authority permit with one certificate of public access and convenience to the Right Choice Transportation LLC. Name circle Birmingham, Alabama, 35215, to be used in the operation of a non-emergency medical transport upon the public streets of Birmingham and to and from locations within the city in accordance with provisions of Title 12, Chapter 16, General Code of the City of Birmingham, 1980, as amended or may be amended.
Second. Williams in second by nine.
Thank you, sir. Items before you.
All right, councilors, this is a resolution granting the operating authority permit with the Right Choice Transportation. Are there any questions or did you have anything to add to this? It was submitted by Dr. Quinn. All right, any questions?
Very straightforward.
Straightforward. Any questions? Let's go ahead with the vote then. Thank you.
Thank you. That vote should be up.
All right, thank you, councilors. Item number 43 passes. I believe those are all of our items.
Yes, ma'am. I'm happy for what we've drawn.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, we did have two speakers that asked to speak and if I call your name, if you please come up, you have three minutes. First, and Mr. Clerk, I'll let you call those names.
First of all, let me say good morning, hello to everybody.
Morning. Morning.
Always good to come down sometime and see what you're doing. Before I say anything, let me just wish all the ladies in here Happy Mother Day.
Thank you.
Those of you who are mothered, those are going to be, all of y'all are mother, all y'all are special to me. So I just want to take this opportunity to wish all of them Mother, Mother Day. I have raised three things. First thing, you seem shook, right? You know, I am a phenomenon man about this voting issue because I can tell you about what happened in 1886 when blacks had full control of the state house and they called for a convention with all that. We even had a black governors one time in the state of Alabama. You know, so the voting thing is a personal thing for me. Of course, you know, I did the march from Selma six times. I also, Rosa Parks was my godmother. So this voting thing is a passion for me. So on May the 9th, to all of you, is the last day that you become a registered voter. If you're not registered, you're named and purged, you need to go ahead on and get it back on the list. Second of all, I just want to thank this council for how they handled that situation with that young man right there. Oh, see, I am a black man and I know it's difficult sometimes to get through them coolers and all that other stuff. You know what I mean? They'll take one of us who made a mistake and tied around all the rest of us. So council, I want to thank you because I was back there, I was really impressed with it, for y'all taking the time to help that young man out because you never know, there may be another AG Gaskin sitting right there that's going through this business. Third thing, I came for, you know, I have worked with this federal, federal fund of probation. Now, I was told that the AG Gaskin motel and the Carver motel was in those federal dollars. You know, and I wondered why it's taken Carver, not Carver, taken AG Gaskin so long to be completed? And I went over to the Carver Theater and I wondered that why that Carver Theater don't have all the funds in it? I don't know whether it was 100% appropriated through the federal dollar, but now I am looking at that. I think they was on that historical thing. So if anyone has the information, please provide it to me. And I just, I just want to know what they are under that federal historical district call. You know, it just, AG Gaskin Hotel taking mighty, mighty long to be completed there. And I just wondered because I worked on the committee. Now also, I was called the other day and my name is up on the, on the National Democratic Party. That's something. So, you know, I've been working, but I'm very.
And you know you can't campaign in here, right?
Okay, I'm, okay, I'm not campaigning.
Because you're out, you're out of time.
Okay, but first of all, thank y'all so much and just I want to wish all of them a happy, happy.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Mr. Russell. Is that it? All right.
Oh, sorry.
We have one more.
Josh.
He was here for the World Games earlier.
Right.
Okay, he was here for the World Games earlier. Thank you. All right, at this time, councilors, we'd like to go ahead and give you the opportunity to give reports from your district. We'll start with you, Councilor Clark.
Madam President, well, I want to start by just remembering that today is the 59th anniversary of the Children's Crusade where over 1,000 school students in Birmingham, Alabama marched for civil rights. So it's easy for me to remember because I was born in 63, so I know that's 59 years ago. Also, we were pretty delighted to join the College Hills Neighborhood Association call last night as we get to know the new neighborhoods that are coming into District Eight. We're also still keeping up with our legacy neighborhoods, so the Fairview neighborhood will meet this evening via conference call at 5:30 and you can call the office, the District Eight office at 205-254-2304 to get the conference call in number and code. Also, Thomas Neighborhood will have their meeting in person tonight. That's at the Mount Hebron Baptist Church Thomas. There are two of them, so make sure it's the Thomas one. That's at 6:00 PM. Our Be Litter Free Crusade continues. Our Be Litter Free Crusade continues. Our next stop is cleanup at the Junction. That's in the Tuxedo neighborhood. We'll be there on Saturday, May twenty-first. We're gathering at the Erskine Hawkins Park at nine-thirty A.M. for registration, and then we'll head out to clean around ten A.M. So please join us. We need volunteers to help us beautify this historic area. The Birmingham Park and Recreation Board, along with the A.G. Gaston's Boys and Girls Club and the Division of Youth Services, are hosting a youth summit for teens and smaller kids at Legion Field this Saturday, from, that's Saturday, May seventh, from noon to two. And the aim of this event is to engage our youth in a positive manner to help curb, curb some of the violence we're experiencing in our communities. And this is National Small Business Week, so we are fortunate to have many small businesses and various support organizations in District Eight. We will be highlighting some of those businesses on social media this week and visiting a few of them, too. So please remember to support our local small businesses as you shop and dine this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Clerk. Councilor Moore.
Yes, so first of all, I just want to, you know, give a shout out to Brother Harry Giddens, who is sitting in the audience, Brownsville Heights Neighborhood Association President. Also want to send a big shout out and congratulations to Mr. Reggie White, a math and science teacher at Booker T. Washington K-8 School, who was named the state's top five Teachers of the Year. And so want to give a shout out to him and Ms. Schamberger, who was also named the Teacher of the Year. Both of them made the Sweet Sixteen in the state competition. So, yeah, as far as the Alabama Elementary Teacher of the Year Top Five, so just want to send the congratulations to both of them. And then my announcements are actually recorded, and we can play those at the end of the council.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Councilor Abbott.
Thank you, Madam President. May eleventh is the next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting date. The Planning Commission has one vacancy right now on it. We will accept resumes from interested parties through May fifteenth. The Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Meeting is tonight at the Avondale Library, and the Birmingham Planning Commission meets tomorrow morning at eight-thirty A.M. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Dr. Quinn.
Thank you, Council President. Eastlake Neighborhood Association meets tonight at seven P.M. at Household of Faith Church at seventy-five oh one Division Avenue. Transportation Committee will meet next Monday, May ninth, at two P.M. in council chambers. Items can be submitted to the agenda by contacting Kimberly Phillips at kimberly.philips@birminghamal.gov. And again, I want to remind folks about the Protecting Good Program. The Protecting Good Program is a joint program of the State Department of Insurance and the City of Birmingham for roofing repairs. They are currently taking applications from northside neighborhoods, which are Central City, Druid Hills, Fountain Heights, Evergreen, and Norwood. Please contact my office at two oh five, two five four, two six seven nine for additional information, or Habitat for Humanity at two oh five, seven eight zero, one two three four. And finally, I just want to say Happy Teachers Appreciation Week to all of our educators out there. We do very much appreciate the work that you do every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Quinn. I was going to try to say Dr. Woods, but Councilor Woods.
I grew up Baptist, so just start calling you Doc, it's okay. Couple things, couple announcements. This Thursday, Echo Howland's Neighborhood will meet at seven o'clock P.M. I believe they're still virtual. Also, Roebuck Neighborhood will meet next Monday, May ninth, at six-thirty P.M. So, like I said, just excited, want to really encourage people to get involved in your neighborhoods. I think, you know, Huffman Community did something unique last week that pulled out a lot more people, but really get involved in the neighborhood, that's that front line where you can actually have a lot of input, you know, really, really impact these different issues, and you actually do have a voice there. So I want to encourage as many people as possible, make sure you're getting out to those neighborhood meetings. Kick it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have some announcement. Wyllam Neighborhood will meet tonight at six P.M. at the Wyllam Public Library, located at forty-three hundred Seventh Avenue, Birmingham, three five two two four. The Acypico Finley Neighborhood will be meeting at five-thirty via conference call. Their dial-in number is nine five two two oh six four nine one eight. The access code is two two three four one eight. North Birmingham Neighborhood will meet on Monday, May the ninth, at six-thirty, also by conference call. The dial-in number is four five two four three six six three four eight. The access code is one zero two three two two six. Public Safety Committee will meet Tuesday, May the tenth, at one P.M. in the council chambers. You can submit your founding information to Brandon McCray by Thursday, May the fifth, at one P.M. Also, I just have some announcements, and Happy Mother's Day to all of the mothers and the fathers who have had to be the mother as well. On Thursday at three P.M., servicing mothers at the station, and it's going to be at the Mobile Gas Station at twenty-two fifty-eight Bismarck Road, Birmingham, Alabama, is going to be a giveaway, is a day of service for women only, women only, y'all, a day of giving back to the mothers. Service provided would be free gas to the first two hundred women, so go out and get your gas, free food, gift bags, bibles, prayer, gift cards, oil change, entertainment by DJ Gorgeous, and this is put on by the Black Women's Roundtable, Pastor Deidre Green at More Than Conquers, the Birmingham Urban League, and Commissioner Sheila Tyson. So go get y'all gas, line up. And then on May the eighth, it's going to be a Mother's Day concert, presented by the Birmingham Urban League, Black Women's Roundtable, the Bismarck, it's going to be at the Bismarck Recreation Center at one hundred fourteenth Street, South Highway, one fifty, Bismarck, Alabama. So there's going to be a lot of giveaways there, music by DJ Bad Boy Butch, the official clutch band, Lamont Landers, and Bobby Rush. And so Commissioner Tyson's also hosting it, and saving the best for last. District Nine Does Derby Day, so on this Saturday from two to seven, come out to the Tuxedo Ballroom, located at two thousand one Avenue D, Birmingham, three five two one four. You can actually register at bit.ly/districtninedoesderbyday. Dress to impress, put your best hats on, come on out, it's free. I mean, we bridging community together, so I just thought this was a great thing to, you know, lead into the Mother's Day, to kind of like bridge the gap in District Nine, so people can come out and meet people that they haven't met before, so that's all I have. Thank you, Madam.
Miss Tate, how many tables and chairs are you going to have there?
Thank you, Ms. Tate. Councilor Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. Eastwood Neighborhood will be meeting this Thursday on Cinco de Mayo at six-thirty at the Habitat Humanity Building. Roebuck, as Councilor Woods just mentioned, will be meeting on May the ninth at six-thirty at East Precinct. Congratulations to IndyCar driver number five, I forget his name, who won Barber Motorsports. Very exciting, both Saturday and Sunday sold out. First time that I think that has happened in the twelve years. We had over, I forget, I knew it was, it was, it started out as thirty-five different states, but it kept growing and growing as tickets kept selling out, and over eight countries had significant groups of people that came to Birmingham. We were broadcasted nationally on NBC and internationally in over one hundred countries. This was a huge success for the City of Birmingham, not just for the twenty million dollars of economic impact it had for the city and the metro, but also the international and national exposure. It's pretty hard to put a price tag on that. So great, great showing from the City of Birmingham and all of our partners for the Barber Motorsports this past weekend. Birmingham Legion will be playing on the fourth at Protective at seven o'clock. Tickets are only seven dollars, and it's also a great way to get outside and support one of our, our local teams. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilor Williams. Councilor Proten.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy Teachers Appreciation Week. Yesterday, I went to Hemp Hill and gave out donuts and coffee to the teachers. That was a lot of fun. And then this morning, I actually got my donuts from, is either District One or Two now?
Probably Two.
At the Krispy Kreme, we're going to say, it was Two. And I gave some donuts to the teachers at Washington K-8, and then Muffins for Mom Event was today. I had to miss it because of pre-council meeting. Also, we had a good time this past Saturday, having a brunch with our neighborhood officers, talking about different initiatives. They would like to see any complaints that they have. The next Public Improvements and Beautification Committee meeting will be today at two P.M. here in the council chambers. Oakwood Place Neighborhood will meet at Harrison Park Recreation Center today at four P.M. The Mason City Neighborhood Association will meet today via teleconference at four-thirty P.M. The call-in number is seven one two, seven seven zero, eight zero one seven, and the code is eight four three, four two six. The North Tussville Neighborhood will meet at Memorial Park Recreation Center tomorrow at five P.M. The next special call Budget and Finance meeting will be this Monday at one P.M. There's a time change in conference room D and E. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Submissions received afternoon will be placed on the next Budget and Finance agenda. Email your submissions to Laquita and H.J. The Shawlon Memorial Garden, so the cemetery over there, is doing maintenance for the grounds every Saturday morning from eight to twelve. Come out and help at sixteen hundred, Twelfth Street Southwest, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one one. Tomorrow, Tussville Library will be hosting their monthly Senior Resource Day and Health Wellness Fair. And then this Thursday, the library will host their Community Resource Day from ten to two P.M. Also, this Monday, Regions will be having their D E and I event, and there also will be an announcement from First C as well. That will be this Monday at Roebuck Community Center. I think the panel starts at three-thirty. It'll be myself, Coach Smoot, that's over Miles Golf Team, I forget one other person. And then they will be having Youth Skills Clinic that will be hosted by Coach Smoot at four-thirty. So if you guys know any youth that are interested in golf or want to just get just a taste of how golf is, just send them there on Monday. And I think that is it, Madam President.
Thank you very much. The announcements for District Seven, just want to remind everyone that the fantastic voyage, get on the bus journey through history. The registration deadline for that is Monday, May ninth. You can contact Ms. Pamela Bass at two zero five, two two three, eleven sixty. And that is also, they would need your shirt size request for any of the children that will be journeying with them. Registration will continue until all seats have been taken. I echo also the acknowledgement of this is National Teachers Week, and I believe yesterday was National Principals' Day. So we just want to be sure that we, I think all of us equally, are very supportive and very proud of our teachers and our principals. So we do want to give each of you a shout out. Yesterday, I did have the opportunity to travel with Councilor Smithman, as she gave a resolution from the city. They celebrated a hundred years of service to the community over there at Baptist Princeton Hospital. I've learned so much in the past few days. I learned that Councilor Smithman was born there. I've learned that another counselor was born the year I was in third grade. And so, I'm just, the things we know. And we've got one counselor that's going to have a fiftieth birthday soon, because that counselor was born when I graduated from high school. So we're going to all be happy next year when we have that birthday. I'm not calling any names, okay? I also just want to thank Baptist Princeton for the service that they've given to our community, along in learning that Councilor Smithman was born there. My grandmother worked there for, retired from there for a number of years, and she actually worked for Mrs. Ida Moffett. So just being back in the hospital and seeing the changes, they had a wonderful opportunity for us to go through and see the service and the different things from the hospital through the years. There was even one hospital bill, I think it was for a thousand dollars, so we can think what that cost was back in the thirties and forties, what that would be equated to today. And I think they'd had someone, church or someone within the Baptist Association had written off the bill. And so the individual only had to pay ten dollars, I think. But again, we don't know what that equated to for that time. So just want to thank them for the service that they've given to the West End community and for the many patients and families that they've served over there. Today, we've had on duty, our officers on duty, were Cedric Pinkert from City Hall, Cheryl Gilliam for South Precinct, and Jamiracle Howard of South Precinct. And Jamiracle wanted us to let us know she was a miracle. So we are very excited that they were joined us today. Happy Mother's Day to all of my colleagues. I know we've got some moms here, and we've got a pup mom over there, too, so we're excited. And to everyone, we excite you all. I am just so happy that on May fifth, people all around the world are going to help me celebrate my fifth year of retirement. So, May fifth, twenty seventeen, I retired from clinical laboratory medicine, so this is five years. I want you all to welcome and join me when you're out on May fifth, and when you're thinking of that, my work in clinical laboratory medicine. So thank you all. Happy Cinco de Mayo. And we're going to go think of the five hours.
Cinco de Mayo and your retirement.
And my retirement. So thank you all so much. Counselors, if we could have a, I feel so happy, Councilor Clark. Yes, ma'am?
Question, if I could, of these gentlemen. Is that, is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
It's about the BRT lanes, you know, they're looking really good, but I think they're confusing a lot of motorists. Do we have any communication going out about those? And I'm just missing the communication.
So, yes, ma'am, we do, Councilor, and what we can do is have Denise Bell follow up with you to let you see what the communication plan is for residents. We've heard that a couple of times, so we want to make sure that we provide residents with up-to-date information. So yes, there's a plan, but we can make sure you have it.
Like, until, until the buses start, can they, I know the lane says don't drive in it, but can they drive in it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what's yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because they are.
Well, but they feel like they're breaking the law, and they might get caught. But the other thing is. I noticed a recent communication started about street closures in the World Games.
Right.
And will that go to all venues? I mean, will that happen?
Yes. That actually happened, yeah, that actually happened while we were in the meeting, so there was an update today provided by Rejourney, and we'll make sure that that follow-up happens again with you, all of you having received that communication.
We're getting it, but it's for certain areas of the campus, not for all of the venues yet, so we can expect something similar.
Our incident commanders are here, too. Chief Moore, Chief Mitchell.
Just to clarify, because I know we're on public record, it's not all venues, it's just the ones that's in the footprint of downtown Avondale and parts of UAB. So everything else is enclosed, so it doesn't have street closures. So like cross plates will be, operation is normal.
No.
No. No. Well, one, but it's very small. It won't, it won't affect anybody in the community.
Good question. Thank you. And I do know there was just some conversation, and I believe you were sort of putting that out in.
That's right.
I'm going to say spurts, but you're doing it.
It's almost layered, so we're making sure that the various sectors of the community, especially those that will be the most affected, that they're learning about it, so we can plan ahead. But that's why we did it globally today, and we'll provide that update to you all.
Thank you very much. All right, can we get that motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All the faith, let it be known for a second.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, councilors. Thank you, members of the public. Thank you, administration. Thank you, everybody.
Good morning, everybody. This is J.T. Moore, your councilman for District Four, over in the Engle Nook neighborhood, here with your D Four weekly announcements. First of all, I'm here at Hope Church. They are having a carnival, a parade, so many different things going on, but it's a lot of great energy. They have different representatives from the neighborhood that have come out, they've gone around the neighborhood honking horns and playing drums and all kinds of great things, just to get the community out, involved, and really engage in them. They have the Housing Authority, Crime Stoppers, Losses State Community College, several games, and everything is free. So, make sure that you're there and in attendance. If you have not had an opportunity to go over to the Don Hawkins Rec Center, I would encourage each and every one of you to, please be sure to go over there. On Wednesdays, they have line dance classes from eleven to one. Saturday ballroom classes are available from eleven to one. With a seven-dollar donation, you can go and have fun and learn some cool dances over there at the Rec Center. So, again, I would encourage you, if you're trying to get your shimmy on, like, make sure that you go and check them out. And lastly, I would just like to give a big shout-out to Ms. Brittany Fair and her fourth grade science class, to their science club. They got an opportunity to participate in the McWayne Science Center competition, did an awesome job, put in a lot of hard work this year, and I can't wait to see what they're going to do next year. And that is all for your D-four weekly announcements. Thank you all, have a great day, and I'm about to catch my kids before they get away and try to get to these games.
This is Councilor Latonya Tate, on-site at the Tuxedo Room for next Saturday, May the seventh. The Kentucky Derby will come to Enslie next Saturday. We're super excited about this event coming over to Enslie. It is a way for people to come out, to get to meet me, and bridge the gap in community, where people can get to meet people that they don't know, and also have an opportunity to have some real, real conversation with me, to know my plans, and want to know your plans for the district, and how you are reimagining your community. This is just a thing that I thought would be a great opportunity to bridge the gap with community, and so I'm super excited to be able to bring our Derby Day to Enslie. Very rich history is over here, and we want to make sure that people get to experience that. And so, we looking forward to seeing you next Saturday, May the seventh, from two to seven. Come dress to impress, wear your best hats, and we're going to show you a grand time, and also, it's about building community and coming together collectively on one accord. And so, this event is going to be a stellar event, and so we're looking forward to having you. So, I will see you next Saturday, here at the Tuxedo Ballroom in Enslie for Enslie Kentucky Derby Day. Thank you.